All right, we are in session. Our first item of business is, we have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I didn't see any concerns with the invoice.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the invoices and exit the Board of Ambulance.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval, or not salary rate approval, Commissioner's Report. Salary rate approval forms will come after that. So, we have Commissioner's Report, Invoices, and credit card report. I have a couple of questions on them, and not really, but as I went through them, we're buying a lot of paper, and we're buying it from porters. So, I asked Shanda to investigate. We used to have a contract with porters, and then they doubled the price on paper. And so, we told each department to go ahead and see where they could get paper for the best price. But now, it looks like, I don't know if people are looking, so I asked Shanda to check, like, the different vendors, see which one has the best price, and then we'll talk to all the departments again and say, you know, let's either get a contract, or let's search for the best price, because especially here, the first year, we got a lot of paper.
And maybe porters is the best price right now.
Yeah, and she's gonna-
Hopefully, that's the case.
She's gonna check that out, but I just asked her to do that, and we can find out. And then, the only other question I had, and this was at the event center, and there was cleaning supplies, and it was just under $1,400.
Do you know why that is that?
I'm looking for the answer.
I can give it to you.
Thank you.
One of the issues with the temporary, or the part-time custodians was, they didn't feel like they had all the equipment they needed in each of the buildings that they needed, so Dan met with them, got a list of the equipment they needed in each building, and so that was spent to equip each building with the equipment needed for cleaning.
Okay, and that was the event center by itself.
Oh, that was for the event center?
Yeah.
I missed that one, and Dan and I talked about that the other day. Dan, are they cleaning up at the event center? They're part-time guys?
Are they cleaning up?
Up at the event center? Is this contract with Hanson to purchase all this equipment, like what we talked about yesterday? Okay, never mind. You got anything I said? Can you strike that from the record?
And actually, Scott's gonna be in later, and you might ask him, you know, but I was just wondering if he was getting ready to open the bathrooms, and everything's been shuttered for the winter, if he's getting ready to open them up and trying to get his supplies. But it was just the price tag of $1,400 for cleaning supplies in January that drew to my attention.
Sorry, Dan and I talked about that, and you said we're gonna see an increase in cleaning supplies. I thought I was smart and could pull out the answer.
Dang it! Other than that, I didn't have any concerns. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the Commissioner's invoices and reports as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the payroll report. Just, I didn't have any concerns there either.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve payroll report as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval forms. Have a chance to look at them, have any concerns?
No. Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
Motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that being said, I'm gonna excuse myself and go to a Board of Health meeting.
Okay.
Enjoy.
We're close enough, we can go, can't we?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, we're gonna run this meeting. Just kidding. It is scary. It's a lot easier when you sit in second chair. All right, Chief O'Hern, you wanna come on up?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan O'Hern, Fire Chief, and Bannock County Invoices.
Oh, we'll need to go into the Board of Ambulance for this.
Do I call you the Chairman now? Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move the Board of Ambulance.
Twinge a little bit here. We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here today just to ask for permission to apply for two grants through FEMA, through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. First grant is for an ambulance. This ambulance would replace one in the current fleet that is a 2,000 ambulance, so it's 23 years old, it's currently being used in the area of income in that district, has about 150,000 miles. We think this is a good opportunity to try to replace that. That's the next one scheduled on our capital replacement plan. And so, the cost of that replacement ambulance is $257,746. The grant amount would be $232,000, which would leave $25,746 as a local match. These grants have a 10% local match.
Go ahead.
Second grant opportunity is for training, and this would be to train up to six people to the paramedic level. And I know we were just before you, a few weeks ago, asking for the permission to take advantage of an opportunity that we received. This was our plan for training prior to that opportunity coming about. We still think it's a really good grant opportunity. These grants probably will not be awarded until the fall or late 2023, and so even taking that timeline into account, if we were awarded this grant and did send somebody through a program, they likely would not be practicing paramedic until sometime in 2025. So, we feel like this is still positioning us to have opportunities in the future as we continue to have discussions about how to change, expand, or do things differently as a district. We don't want the lack of trained personnel to be one of our limiting factors. So, we're proceeding forward with the application for the training grant. This grant would cover the costs of attendance at the, in the program, any travel expenses that were associated with that, as well as any backfill costs. So, if, for example, if we had to send a student to an event, usually, we send them to a two-week period in the Boston program, and they're off-shift for that. This would pay for the replacement employee to ensure that we had level staffing. So, the local match on that would be $15,000, and much of that would, some of that would be personnel, it would be in-kind, and then the other portion would be the actual budgetary match for the cost of the program, again, at a 10% match.
Okay.
Ask a question?
Please.
For next year's budget, we'll budget the full cost of the ambulance, not knowing if we get this grant, but what about on the training? Is your intent or thought early on to budget the full cost, or would we just go without sending in so many people?
I think we generally do include some funds in our budget-
But not to the amount?
-for training, and so, we'll look at that as we approach. I don't think that it would be an increase in the contract amount that we build the budget for this year, for 2024.
Okay.
So, with these matches, do you wanna budget, or do we have money for that now, or do you wanna wait and just include that in next year's budget where the award is potentially not till next year?
It'll be next year's budget.
Yeah.
And normally, what we do with the ambulance, we tend to budget for the full cost of the ambulance-
Right.
And then, if we're lucky enough to get the grant, then we just have that money savings, but we're using reserves when we pay for the capital item like that. And that was the reason I asked the training question, too.
Good. And I will just add that this application is for replacement ambulance. We also are anticipating, depending on what the Commission decides to do with the district in regards to South County, possible expansion, or changing our deployment model. There is a grant through the State of Idaho that will be opening this spring that we've been very successful at in the past, and so, we intend on probably applying for something under that grant, depending on which direction we decide to head in the future.
With the income ambulance, when you replace it, what do you do with that?
According to the grant guidelines, it would need to be surplus. Through the guidelines under this, if they award a vehicle, you have to surplus the replacement vehicle.
Okay. Okay, do you have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the grant applications as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. And then, another motion to exit the Board of Ambulance?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we exit the Board of Ambulance.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, can I make a friendly amendment to your motion on approving these and authorize Ernie's, the Chairman's signature when he gets back? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that all right?
Oh, on that form?
Yeah.
That's fine. It is an online application that I will be submitting, so if you would like, because I am an authorized representative, so if you would like to also amend for that as well.
Okay. So, the friendly amendment, then, is to authorize the Chairman's signature on this upon return, and authorize Nancy's signature on the electronic submission.
Sounds good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Nancy. Okay. City of Lava.
Morning, Commissioners. May I approach and give you-
Please.
My name's Hudson Fell, I'm the co-compliance officer for Lava Hot Springs. This is a building that, when I came on board about a year ago, I deemed dangerous and condemned it. It's built, it was built in 1915. It's next right to the west of Buddy Campbell Park, so it's kind of a, I condemned it because the kids were going in there and stuff like that, so we, I applied for a permit, we got a permit through the county, because it's still in the county, even though the city owns it, and we wanna do a park expansion, so what we're asking is, oh, and all the asbestos has been removed back in 2020. So, all we're asking is that you, the Commissioners would grant a fee waiver for the dump fees, which our contractor estimated was 30 loads.
Do you have an estimate on the tonnage for that?
I don't, no, I don't know the tariff, what it would be. He couldn't estimate it either. There is a basement in there, so that would obviously weigh more. But the rest is just a wood structure.
And did you say all the asbestos has been removed?
Correct, yeah. The manifest and the contract we had with-
Okay.
Yeah, it's in there.
Any thoughts or questions? Kyle, come on up for a second. What's your thoughts or concerns on anything like this?
Clean up?
Yeah, as far as the amount of tonnage coming in and waiving the fee.
So, how many trucks, you don't know ton, but you know-
KT Excavation, Kit tells us he estimated 30 loads, but he didn't give us a tonnage. Like I said, it's mainly wood, and there is a small basement beneath it. This word footage is on the next page.
Yeah, if they have it separated out, it'd be a little bit lower cost, you know, if we can, if it's a demo and they have all the other things taken out of it, it could go to C and D, which is a, lower than a lined cell, so it could be less. I mean, you're looking at $27 to $35 a ton. Trucks usually haul about 10 tons.
So, do the math for it, like, 300 bucks a truck?
Yeah.
So, about three grand is what we're talking about?
That's the estimated amount of trucks, yeah.
Okay.
But now, that could be around three grand, yes.
Anything, any other thoughts? It seems if we're able to help off the city, get this project done, seems okay to me.
Okay, then I will accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the fee waivers requested.
Can we make an amendment on that, that it be, that the stuff be separated out?
Separated.
I'll talk to Kit about that, so.
And he should know what's constructionally, and what would be stuff that can go in there.
Yeah, he's done this before, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it'll be separated out, then I'll agree with that. So, we have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appreciate it, Commissioner Kyle.
Have a good day.
Praise Temple of God, non-denominational church, are they here? Praise God, non-denominational church, Islamic Society of Southeast Idaho.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Haseel Abubak. I'm fifth president of Islamic Society, mosque in Bucatello, and I come today to ask you for taxi-free for a mosque, because there's no traffic.
And this is-
This is mosque for I will-
This is for 2022?
22 and 23.
Okay, and how come we're late asking?
Say again?
How come we are late asking?
He used to send it to us, or somebody before me, he used to take care of it, and he left beginning 22 or end of 21, and nobody knows, till I received Bebar, I believe, months ago, and I came here to room 102, and she told me to Bebar fill it, and came in today to come and deliver to us.
Okay, we don't send out notices anymore, so make sure it's on your calendar and get that submitted, in fact, we're-
Because I think it's automatic, because the mosque collects checks, no taxes, but something to know, but thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, we're starting to collect applications for this year, so I think they're online?
I did, too.
Oh, you done it?
Yeah, I already had. I asked you if you have to fill another one, or this be for 23, to not make mistake again.
Okay, great, thank you. You have any questions, John?
No.
Okay, and the use of the mosque hasn't changed, it is for religious purposes only?
Same thing, same beliefs and everything.
Okay, I would entertain a motion, then.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the applications requested.
Okay, we have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, have a good day.
We don't have the Praise Temple of God, non-denominational church here, so... Do you wanna wait and see if they'll show up, or do you wanna just move on it? Let's move on. Okay, I bet I'll entertain a motion. Praise God Temple. So, do we table this, or? You said you wanna move on it.
No, no, move on to the-
Oh, okay, then we'll table that one. All right, sorry. Okay, we'll table that one, then. All right, Kate Peterson.
Good morning. My name's Kate Peterson, I'm an attorney for Clay S. Flynn. He and a couple other private landowners who own parcels up near the county landfill are seeking authorization to include county landfill parcels in their map amendment and rezoning application, and I've come today to request authorization to include those parcels. I believe you received a letter of authorization request from us with my request for the meeting today with the parcels listed. Just a little bit of background, the county parcels are currently zoned as agricultural, and one is zoned as residential suburban. The private parcels, the three private parcels that issue are also zoned as residential suburban. The private parcels have proven unmarketable due to their proximity to the landfill, and so, we are seeking to apply with, starting out with planning and development. We were informed that in order to be submitting a complete application, we'll need county approval to include the parcels in our application. So, that's what I'm here today to request.
Okay, Tristan?
Yeah, so I have just a little bit of additional information if you guys want it. I did do some research this week to look at all of the uses that are currently at the landfill and compare them to our use chart, and what would be considered a permitted use depending on zone. And almost all of the uses do not coincide with the agricultural zone. Most of them fit into a light industrial zone or an industrial zoning district. I did do a little bit of historical research on the mapping, and it had, the landfill has been ag since December 1964 is the oldest map that I could go back to, or BLM. Some of it has been since acquired by Bannock County to expand the landfill, but so then, and typically, when it's acquired by BLM, it then goes to, gets designated as whichever zone is in that vicinity, which was ag up in that area, so that's why it ended up in the agricultural zone. The neighborhood, the parcels that are the private parcels are currently residential suburban, as case said, and the future land use map also designates those as residential suburban, so.
Okay, so the request is to adjust this to industrial, light industrial?
Industrial, I believe is what they are requesting.
Okay. Alan, do you have any thoughts or comments on including us in an application like this?
I don't have any immediate concerns about that. Don't have anything additional to you.
So, historically, the only parcels that we've ever included as part of personal requests are like road parcels, if it makes sense to just run, include the roads, so we don't have a random zone where our roads are sitting. We've never, that I'm aware of, been included in any personal requests for a rezone, but I do know that as we go through our rewrite of our zoning ordinance, we are planning a mass rezone of the entire county, and I know we would be looking at the landfill and what makes sense to designate that as in the future, so.
My understanding is we'd still be going through all the other processes for the map amendment and rezoning applications with full notice and consideration, and I can provide more detail at that phase as well, but if you have any other questions?
No, I, do you have any questions?
So, if I understand this right, the request is to include these parcels in the rezone that you're planning to do, is that what the request is?
So, the request is to include the landfill parcels as part of an individual's request to rezone their parcels right now, so it's not part of what will be in the future when we rewrite the ordinance, this is just a personal request from an individual landowner.
To actually designate this now as industrial?
As industrial, correct.
And you don't see any issues with that?
I don't see any issues with the uses that are currently at the landfill, it's just whether or not we want to do it as part of an individual request, or wait for a future time when we are planning to do just a mass rezone of the entire county.
And are there any ramifications to do that either way? Would this make any problems for you down the road, or?
No, I don't think it would make any problems for the use of the landfill or for Bannock County. It's, I guess, just politically, whether we want to go down that path now, or wait until we do a mass rezone of the county.
The concern that I have doing it right now is, I would like a little bit of a legal review to see if there's any precedent, because if we do this, this does set a precedent and could lead to spot zoning issues in the future. So, if we could have a week or two to look if there's any legal precedent before we set a precedent for something like this, I would, I would ask for that. I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but where this would be setting a precedent that we haven't done before, I'd like to see if there's anything else in the state that has been done like that that would cause us any legal issues down the road for a spot zoning, potential spot zoning issue.
Maybe we should listen to Kyle as well, Kyle?
I'm Kyle Vermester, County Public Works. One thing to consider, too, that like for the spot zoning and stuff, the landfill with water contamination, different things like that, and there's kind of that zone below, to me, I would request that this would be a good thing, because that limits wells-
Right.
And with water issues already, we do have city water there that they can hook up to, but we still have different issues there, so there is kind of that impact zone. So, me personally, I like it to be more of a commercial than more households there that we have to worry about water.
Yeah, like I said, I don't have a problem with it. For me, it's just the precedence of including us with that and creating something going forward. So, if we could have two weeks, does that give you enough time, Alan?
I-
Let me ask another question here. When is this rezoning gonna be done, and when would this be included in that, if we were to wait?
So, if we were to wait, our current timeline to rewrite the ordinance is to have it done, have the ordinance rewritten by January 2024. And then, at that point is when we would go through and start researching the rezoning of the entire county, and we might make some amendments to the future land use map at the same time. So, I would say maybe a year to a year and a half.
And is that a problem to wait that long?
My clients have just encountered difficulty marketing or being able to develop these properties as residential, and so, they'd like to try to begin to make productive use. You know, now is easier, better for them than later, but we do see this as somewhat inevitable. These parcels are, you know, once you cross I-15 after, on Fifth, and start going up the road towards the landfill, these parcels are kind of after that residential corridor and just right up against the landfill, and so, as far as waiting, we'd obviously prefer quicker, but we do see it as kind of inevitable, and so, be seeking that at some point.
And there's some history with the parcels that they're wanting to join with us, which again, is another reason I wanna be careful and make sure we're not doing a spot zoning that's gonna cause us problems down the road. Because I agree, I think inevitably, this is the right thing to do, but if we can have legal a couple weeks, three weeks to look at it and see if we can expedite a little bit of the process, that'd be my request.
If, in preparing for this, I've done a little bit of research on the spot zoning issues that could be involved, I'm happy to share what I found as like a head start. And I'm not too concerned about it after what I looked into, but of course, independent review, happy to wait. Did you say three weeks?
Does that make you feel better if we go three?
Three weeks would be better, yes.
Okay, we'll go three weeks, and are you okay with that, John?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we'll table this, give legal counsel three weeks, time to review, and make sure we're okay, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shanda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Shanda Crystal, Chief Lieutenant Officer. I have two items before the Board today. The first one is a request for signature on a contract use form to purchase mag chloride and piggybacking off of, excuse me, the highway district, Power County's Highway District. It's been submitted to legal for review. It's been submitted to legal for review. If I could just step out, but if there's any questions or concerns, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
No, so this is a good deal, we're partnering with another county to give us?
Power County does about double what we do. Is that about?
Did you look at this at all?
Yeah, so it kind of saves us a little bit of work. There's other counties that just seem to, they have it all ready to go each year, and so other counties kind of wait back a little bit. One of them, what Power County does is this mag chloride for dust control. So we've kind of waited, piggybacked, so they've already did the work necessary. We do that same thing sometimes with the asphalt and different things like that. They went through a formal for the bidding process and everything. This is, what it is for us is, these are roads that we mag around 60, 65 miles of road. So this mag costs about $1,500 a mile for just the product. To mag, and why we mag these is it's not just a dust control, it's, it's an amendment to the road that will solidify it. So if we have a road with so much traffic that it starts washboarding and stuff like that, each time we have to, if we have to blade it three times in that year, it's costing us more just in maintenance than to just go spray it and it's good for a whole year. So we use these in the high-traveled, steep hills that people pull campers over, different things like that, and also a little bit if there's houses in a high-traffic zone that don't just sit there and dust them all summer.
Okay. And we've got budget for this, is in the budget?
I'm seeing.
Okay. I know Ernie would ask it, so.
I know budgets for mag chlorides.
Okay, all right. I'll take a motion.
And so this is to, you're asking us to approve entering into this contract for the mag chloride, is that right?
Right, so we're piggybacking off of dust busters that will allow us to piggyback off of Power County's bid that they went out and publicly bid out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize them to go forward with this contract.
Okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, thanks, Scott.
The second item I have before the board is a procurement update for you. A few of the items that I would like to draw your attention to on your dashboard there is the district court. I just picked that department, but it is a conglomeration of adult probation and juvenile probation and several of the courts that we have. So I just picked district court to represent them all, but it is drug testing services for the county. We've had a single supplier that has rather dramatic increase over the last little bit. So the different departments got together and we had an initial meeting and we'll go out to bid for those services and see if we can't get something. They're also, sorry, a little more economical for us and be able to, because we have two different arms of that. One is that the county pays for certain drug tests and then we have individuals that pay as well. So on both ends, we're trying to make it economical for those services to happen here at the county. Another item we're also looking at in regards to that is where they're doing the drug testing. We currently do it at the county facility. We want to know if there is a better way to handle those services and if the provider can have it somewhere other than county location. So we'll look at that as well as we go move forward with that solicitation. The second one is with the Downey Fairgrounds and the pole barn for the sheet barn that they're going to replace down there. We're getting the specifications for that written up and expect that to come before the board here in a couple weeks. The surveyor review, we received four qualifications in the bid opening this week and those are under review by the evaluation team. On the detention center roof, that was awarded a couple weeks ago, and we have scheduled a meeting for next week on February the 15th with both the contractor and the manufacturer of the material that we want to use to have a conversation to see about if there's a value engineering available for that project to bring the cost down on them.
Will Dan be involved in that?
Yes, sir. And then, oh, sorry, other county participants is obviously the sheriff's office. Levi will be heading out at the sheriff's office and then Hal Jensen will also be from the county as well. And the final one on that is the events center concert production services. Scott has emailed out a final rider to those four individuals that have expressed some interest in providing production services with the deadline of Monday to respond back to those now that we have a firm date and firm equipment and labor that we need, then they'll be able to submit a bid back to him and so he's moving forward with that project as well. The last item I had to talk about the board today was a more general discussion about procurement. And one of the goals that I had set for this fiscal year is to find efficiencies through using cooperatives and other partnerships that we have available to us as a government agency. And as part of that goal, we have been able to participate in a national organization. And then I have just been appointed to the board of the Idaho Public Purchasing Association. So we're, you know, participating on a national level and then an Idaho level. And in conversations with Commissioner Crowder, we would really like to start focusing on the local, the political subdivisions that we have up and down eastern Idaho and start really connecting those different departments. We do a lot, like we just saw with Mr. Burmester and the mag chloride with Power County, we do a lot of the same stuff here, right? We're going to push all the same snow, right? We're going to have the same items in our, well, we're the only one that has a landfill. But, right, we do a lot of the same things. So we want to start utilizing those partnerships and connecting those more. And in doing so, I would start to contact different agencies. We wouldn't stick just with counties, we would look at the cities, state agencies that we have. I had a brief conversation with Charity with CCOG and some of her interests that she might have in joining that group just to be able to stop trying to reinvent the wheel every time somebody has to do something. Some of the smaller counties here, it'll be few and far between when they need to go out to bid for something. And so when they go out to do it, why have them start from scratch? Let's have them have that network of individuals that they can reach out to and that we're all trying to make each other better and learn from one another and potentially find savings in the ways that we're doing things. So that's just something that I would like to start doing here in the next little bit and start making those connections and conversations and going out and seeing what other people are doing.
I like it. It's good.
Perfect. The last item as far as the update goes, Commissioner Moser wanted me to report. He had, as he looked at the payment report this week, had quite a few different departments looking at paper purchases and he just wondered, wanted a recap of where we were. We had gone out to bid, we had a contract when that company, when Porters almost doubled the price on us, we canceled that contract and left it to departments to move forward as efficiently as they felt possible. So Commissioner Moser asked me to run a quick search of paper and just see where it was because it is a difficult commodity to procure. So in a five-minute search, we were able to find that Office Max had a sale of $49 and at the highest end, we had Porters that had $75 a case. So we would like to encourage, as potentially you meet and talk with departments and I will as well, for a quick search of the internet, right? You can run, we ran five different places, three of them here in town that you can purchase paper from, but you could save $26 on paper in a five-minute search. So just being a little minded of what you're doing and planning, right? So you don't, aren't to your last room of paper before you go to purchase again, you might be able to hit some of those sales that Valley or Porters or whoever else might have to be able to just be more efficient with their funds that they have available.
With that sale price, is that just a, like a 30-day thing? Because some of these purchases were last month, so that sale price may not have been available?
Oh, right. We're just saying in the five minutes that it took me to run today, this morning, that's what was available, so.
I just wanted it to be noted that departments may be doing that and maybe weren't paying more because maybe that sale wasn't an option. Because I know in our office, the individual that I have do purchasing, she does check multiple people. But I agree, we need to have departments aware and conscious that they need to check multiple vendors.
Yeah, because.
And not just go through what they're comfortable with.
When we had the contract, we were like, what, 36 bucks a case or whatever it was?
Right.
And now, now our 45 is the sale price?
49.
49.
There, unfortunately, Office's max regular price is $88. So like if you were comfortable with going to Office Max, it would not be economical on a consistent basis, but just that awareness to, and it's not every pin, every staple, right? There are some things that you put more time into than it's worth, but a quick search, having planning, preparing, having a single place like auditing does that does those purchases, that they're just know and are aware of what it is and where they can get a good deal. Often we get coupons and stuff like that in the mail too, but just to be aware and vigilant, maybe?
I think maybe we can send out a county-wide email and just ask people to just pay attention and look before they just make a single order.
Okay.
I think that'd be a fair, simple reminder.
Just that there's a couple different places and, right, that we can do that. Yep, I will certainly send that out.
Do you, do you look at things like this periodically? Look at, well, what's the cost of paper today or other items that we buy a lot of? Or is this just because Commissioner Moser said, hey, let's check this out?
Usually it's upon a request. More often than not, I do more of the bidding out processes, less of the internal stuff. We've got a lot of great departments that have processes in place that they price check and do their things on a consistent basis. But as things pop up, usually it's just when they, when a request is made, then I'll jump on and ask. If there's a department that calls asking how to move forward with a purchase, right, I can make recommendations at that time, but generally the departments have the authority, you know, to make purchases as best as they see fit.
Would it make sense for certain items for us to periodically check the market and see what's available, what kind of sales are out there and things like that, and then just inform proactively the other departments?
We, we could look at setting up, right? Because we have sales reps in the local companies that work here. So they could definitely tell me when they have a sale on whatever it might be, right? And we can put that information together, send out, there's a department head email. That wouldn't take much time at all to be able to just have those sales rep report back and then send out that information that then might spark if HR happens to need folders or whatever and Porters has them on sale. That will just spark that email as it comes across Ryan's desk that they could move forward with that.
What do you think?
Well, I would, I would suggest, and again, this is your area of expertise, why don't you put together, put together a list of maybe 10 or 15 items that you think would be worth considering, like paper, on a regular basis and then have them, just have Shanda or whoever.
Yeah, I'm really ashamed that you'd have to come up with that list because you know what we're buying a lot of and what, where you might see such dramatic cost differentials come across.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Kristy? As you watch invoices and stuff come through, is there categories of things that we buy a lot of on a regular basis, like paper?
And our office actually used to kind of track that a little bit. Before procurement was developed, we would watch and see what people were paying for paper. We would see that they were paying a big differential, then we would reach out and say, hey, you can get this cheaper here. Same thing with like as small as the water coolers. Some people were paying eight bucks, some were paying 12 without replacements, and so we would reach out. But we've stepped back because that's been assigned to someone specific.
Would you two just kind of work real quick and come up with a list of what you guys see as our typical things, maybe 10 or 15, that we can just periodically have Shanda monitor and go?
Yep, I'll reach out to Kristy.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Scott Crowther and Company.
Good morning, commissioners. Scott Crowther, Vendricker Business Manager.
I'm Amber Davis with Donor Connect.
So Donor Connect is an event that has happened for the last couple of years up at the facility. Beginning last year, Commissioner Moser requested we bring these types of events to you, to the board for decision, for decision on it. Typically, they rent a pavilion, they pay full fees for the pavilion, but then they also host a walk-run around the facility. It does not close the facility, it impacts any of the use of the facility, however they are using the entire facility. So we feel like it is a great opportunity for the community and we support it.
Is there any setup or takedown that you guys are involved in?
I know we had talked a little bit about throwing out some cones to cover the walkways for any time these events happen. We really haven't had much, if any, of an issue even with that. So I think, I think it's, yeah, it's just really, a really good deal.
And then does it impact your garbage collection cycle or?
No more than anything else.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any problem with this, do you?
Oh, it sounds good to me.
Okay, then I'll undertake a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing your event.
Okay, additionally, I have a contract for the Swink Motion Pictures. As you guys, as you may be aware, we have a, after the last few years, we've run movies in the park. It is gaining in popularity. We're hoping this year to maybe take it to the next level with our own in-house concessions department being able to sell, or at least to market some of those movies. Our plan this year is to show seven shows, although the contract will allow us to pay for six because we have a credit for one show from last year. So if you would like to know what those shows are, I can read you the list.
What do you got?
We have Dog.
I'm sorry.
Dog.
Dog.
Yeah, it's a, it's a riveting movie about a dog. We have Jurassic World, Top Gun, and the Top Gun is a movie night that we want to put out to Bannock County employees as an employee appreciation night.
Is that the new Top Gun or?
Yes, the new one. Dirty Dancing, we're going to market that as a ladies' night. Yeah. Lyle Lyle, the crocodile, Doctor Strange, and Super Mario, the new Super Mario. So a few things we've done with, you know, with scheduling our own events, the concerts that we are able to maybe mix some of these in on weekends that we haven't done in the past. And then we're also trying to find ways to attract certain demographics from the community. Some of the high school kids want to come out during one of the dances, I think it was a homecoming dance, we usually will put a movie or something like that on, so. But it sounds like a good opportunity to keep building that aspect of our, of our facility.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Swink Motion Pictures contract as presented. An authorized chairman's signature when he gets back.
You want me to make that one?
No, I made the motion.
You're making the motion?
Yeah, you want. So we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Let's go to our tractor rental agreements for the year. For the last several years, we've rented two different tractors. And this was an option rather than purchasing a new tractor several years ago. This, this works really well for us. Every now and again, we do run into issues with our tractors, including these new tractors, but with this agreement, the company that we work with sends technicians up and they take care of the issues with the tractors for us relatively quickly. Last year, there was an issue with one of the tractors and they just swapped us out with essentially the same tractor, but we were, we didn't really see a loss of services to the, to the members of the community. The one thing that I asked for that's a little bit different, that last year, the last two years, we've rented a tractor with turf tires, small, a smaller tractor that can pull a lawnmower and then also that can, that can run our vertigrain and verticizer. The vertigrain is pretty integral to the, I'm sorry, the wellness center fields because it can actually penetrate up to nine inches into the soil. We really only ever see about four to five inches. That's really a heavy piece of equipment and the tractor we had been using was like the smallest tractor that would handle that piece of equipment. And honestly, it just didn't. So we worked out an option where they're going to rent us a bigger tractor, but we would have to look at purchasing the tires for it, the turf tires for it. So the larger tractor is the same lease payment. So, the larger tractor is the same lease payment as the smaller tractor. It would just be us finding the money to buy the tires out of my budget.
How often would you have to replace the tires? Can we get a couple of years out of them?
For sure. Like, I think, I think they just gave us the same exact tractor, well, I know they gave us the same exact tractors for the last few years, and turf tires, we have an old tractor, an old Massey Ferguson tractor, that has turf tires that we've been using for a long, long time. The benefit to us finding the money for the tires for this new tractor is, I would actually request that they send us both sets of tires, and then we swap tires based on the event. So, right now, that little, that little tractor that we rent is only good for the lawn.
Right.
Like, we've tried using it, you know, we've tried to use it to help out with like high school rodeo, to move hay, and that just results in damage to the tractor. So, this year, we're, you know, with this larger tractor, we're looking to, you know, again, we come up with a purchase for the tires, then we're square for, I think, a few years. We buy the turf tires, it's probably easier for us to find tractors to rent in the future, whether it's just company or another company, and throw our turf tires on that tractor.
So, do you change the turf tires yourself, or do you take them down to the shop and have them do it?
No, we change them. We have the facilities within our shop, it would take us just a few minutes to swap them out.
Okay. Do you know what the price on the tires are, is that?
I've got the quote, the butters, as, well, it's just been verbally, he told me roughly how much it would be. We haven't done a lot of shopping around for it, but he had mentioned it was about $8,500.
What's the invoice here for the, for the tires for $5,800?
Maybe that is the turf tire. Maybe I just-
Galaxy, Galaxy R3 tires.
Yeah, yes, I 100% transposed it, he said $50, I said $85, but that is, that is the quote for the tires.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have the money for that somewhere?
I gotta find, I gotta do some creative, not creative, I've gotta work with Kristy to make sure that we have the funds for it. So, I think that the, the moving forward, the tractor lease, that second lease doesn't come until April 1st. The February 1st is when we get the big blue, which we have on our property right now, but we wouldn't take possession of that other one until April 1st, and so trying to figure out the money for the tires is really good.
You've got a couple of months.
Okay. I think we have some, we have some possibilities that we can pull it from. It's a worthwhile adventure, I just haven't, I haven't met with Kristy on it yet.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns?
So, you're asking us to do what here?
Just to do the rental on the tractors. This isn't about the tires today, this is just the rental on the tractors.
To approve renting the tractors.
And then, I'll have to come back, because we'll probably have to change lines, I would imagine, right? Or do something?
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll have to do something as far as the purchase of the tires, but that can happen in the next month or two.
Okay, so I'm gonna pull the tire contract out.
That's fine.
Okay.
You good, you good with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rental of the tractors.
And authorize the chairman's signature when he gets back.
And authorize the chairman's signature.
Okay. We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. DJ Services.
Finally, we have the DJ Services contract. Apparently, this is a thing. So, last year, we, we had to switch up our DJ for the 4th of July, and we used DJ Adrian last year. He provided the DJ Services for both the beach party and then also for the car show. His prices increased by about $50. Last year, we were able to find sponsors to cover the cost of this, but we still need, we'd like to get him reserved early this year, and that's why we're pushing the contract through.
Okay. And this will come out of the 4th of July funds we've set aside?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the contract as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Go forth.
That is all for me.
Well done. Okay. Ryan, I think you're up.
Right. I imagine this will go quickly, just maybe for the record, and you can recall, so back in, I believe it was December 29th, I submitted some chain updates to the HR standard operating procedures that included the performance evaluations, internships, and job families. And if you want some time to look at it, but back in January 12, the internships and performance evaluation procedures were approved and signed, but the job family component, you wanted to take and have the other elected officials discuss it in a meeting, and so that, there was that meeting, and I was trying to get it onto the agenda for January 26, but if I remember right, the meeting was the day before, so I didn't have enough time to get it on the agenda, and so it's just kind of got pushed back until today. So, I haven't made any changes since our last discussion with all the elected officials and since I, when I submitted it last time back early January, so it's no changes, it's just, you wanted to get the feedback from the other elected officials, and now it's back on the agenda to just-
So, do we have the feedback yet, or you haven't had those meetings?
We, we had the meeting.
You had the meeting, yeah.
Everybody was on board and thought it was a step in the right direction, or a step, so.
Yeah. And, and as a reminder too, and maybe to help, so, the job families was a strategy for comparing positions across departments, right? So, so, someone in, in a position in the event center that may be somewhat similar to maybe someone in the public works, you know, we try to have a system in place to compare them. And this first phase, and what I suggested, had zero budget impact, it was just capturing where we were at in the moment, right? And then, what I will be presenting later might be some adjustments to it, you know, as we adjust for future budget, but this particular phase of the process was just capturing where we were in the moment, with zero budget impact.
So, this is just approving the job families, but departments can still provide input as to if they think they're in the right family?
That's right, yeah, that's the next phase of kind of-
Okay, 'cause I still haven't met with you to see where my people lie and if that's correct.
Yeah, and I'm in the process of, yeah, of talking to-
I was just talking to Kyle yesterday, right? Oh, you're not Kyle.
But, and other departments have been working on it, so.
Yeah. That was the discussion, is to iron that stuff out, so.
Cool, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the implementation of job family system as presented. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I do have, I know I submitted it like a month ago, but I do have a copy, I've been here to sign it, and I don't know, Nancy, if you're comfortable with adding this later or-
You can email it to me when you-
Okay, so, or I could just write it after the meeting.
We can go ahead and sign it here.
Okay.
Here.
Like I said, it's, it says the same as it was when it was submitted before.
All right, Dan.
All right.
Patiently waiting.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dan Kendall, Facilities Director. I am here, I had a custodian put in his two-week notice, and rather than replace him, I would like to add his workload to the cleaning contractor's contract. It had great luck with the cleaning contractor, I think we're getting great product, and it's cheaper than, than what we pay in salaries and benefits, and Ryan might even have some more benefits to add to that as far as liability and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we save, we would save on the risk of workers comp as well, which, which has been an issue historically with, with part-time janitors and janitors.
The estimate was $1,600 a month to take over four more buildings. I say it is cheaper than wages and benefits. We recently moved some money from my A budget to my B budget, so we'll have some money to pay that to the contractor, and so I'm here to get a signature on that contract.
The other item, because this, so the money we had moved was from the vacant electrician position, and we did that on Tuesday-
Yep.
-with the resolution coming next week, but with this change, would you be comfortable if I also submitted for the current vacant position any dollars that will be left? I should be able to determine what that dollar amount is the end of the month when we do that payout and final check. I could bring forth another resolution to move those dollars to B to cover operating, and those dollars will not be budgeted for next year.
Right.
So, that would be a permanent move of dollars, if you are-
Yes.
-good with that?
Yes, that was gonna be my next question, so are you okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Dan and I talked about that this morning, so, and yesterday, but I'd like to get the final payout and everything else done, so that I have a for sure final amount for this year, but then, like I said, next year, we'll just-
Move that.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the addendum to the contract.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Dan.